Good morning. It's Saturday, October 23rd. This is Evans. We're looking at Spavonaw Creek, just below Lake Uche, below the dam. Just a gorgeous, gorgeous area. You can start to see some of the beautiful fall colors on the oak trees. Got here late last night, got set up in the dark. We're staying at the Spavonaw area campground at Grand Lake, below Grand Lake. Just a beautiful area. Had a quiet night. Did drive some roads. Heard one good solid wood knock. But this morning, we're interviewing witnesses that Jody Chisholm has set up interviews with several witnesses from the Mays County area. So it's gonna be an exciting day, but turned into a beautiful morning. And we are, we are enjoying this weekend with the fall weather. And just such an exciting area, lots of hills, creeks, that sort of thing.
He had a Cherokee home built and they was clearing out the yard where he made a lot of tracks with a dozer. And I was just out one day walking around looking. I hadn't looked down. I seen this print. And I seen that other one. It was in grass. It didn't come out very good. This is the first time I've ever mixed any of this up to do it. And but I got pretty good. And one time, we took it to a place that it looked like it had a hair in it. But I've never been able to find it. It was in Mays County and we live just up the hill from Strang. And they just put in a light pole. And I was out there looking around at it. Hadn't looked down and see this. And I called him. We went to town and got the plastered parrots. Made the print, but that didn't turn out very good because like I said, it was in the grass. It was kind of hard where that foot was standing. They was trying to buy it from me and stuff. That or not will sell. Told him to go get a tape measure and we laid it down to give a general idea of how big it was.
About 12 inches.
It was at least 12, 13 inches long.
Close to it. It was in the dirt, so it was harder to get a deep print. So that's why it's so thin. I mean, the way it was setting is there's a tree line, the poles go this way. It was right in the middle. Like right at that tee where it crosses, like it was going out towards the grass, following the light poles out towards the lake, more or less.
It was right away from the Blacktop Road up to the house. Years ago, I've been here all my life. It split off to our neighbor's house and our house. So there's a right of way left of line running right there where we found the prints.
We go down, follow it down and it goes so far and it goes into the lake. And we think that's where it was following. And probably curious of what they were building there. Cause they cleared out a lot of land right there to, to build the house. So we think it was just being curious and looking around, seeing what's going on.
My first encounter that I had, I didn't actually see it. I was hunting out at my dad's property, tracking a deer. And it was me, my dad, my best friend and my little brother. And as we were going through the brush, my friend and I were up ahead of my dad. And we caught this like really weird smell. And I, the only way that I can explain is it was like really, really musty. And we got up to the top of the trailhead. And we found disturbance in the leaves. So we started looking closer and we found footprints. Um, well, my friend Garrett was like, um, does that look like a, a human footprint? I was like, no, that's, that's way too big. He goes, there's no way that we just found a big foot footprint. And I was like, I think we did. And as we said that, we heard the brush move. So I took my light and I panned over to the left. And all we seen was some ice shine. But the only problem was, is where this ice shine was, was like almost eight foot off the ground. And there was nobody else or out there besides us. And there were no trees big enough for something to be sitting in the branches. So we kind of, kind of booked it out of there because the woods got really quiet and we got spooked. And I was like, yeah, well, I'm not tracking this deer anymore. We can get back out in the morning. So we went back home.
I think the youngest I had to have been was maybe 10 or 11, maybe 13, not very much older, right in those years. My grandmother picked huckleberries. That's how we made extra money. And we would walk way back out in the woods to pick huckleberries. And then I'm talking, you know, three, four miles down the woods. There's nothing around except you in the woods. And we've had this lady go with us. Her name was Lorraine. And she was, you couldn't get no more Christian than this woman at all. I mean, if you even thought a bad word, she'd pop you upside the head. When we went on this one ridge, it's called Devil's Backbone. And it's because it's so very steep. But the huckleberries are the size of your thumbnail. You get out there and you're, you know, picking and we were seeing just deer and stuff, normal stuff. Not a me. I'm picking on this one side and I had seen rocks fall from on the other side to holler on this cliff. I was like, where'd they come from? And Lorraine's like, did you see that? She come up to me. I'm like, did you see what? And I'm like, I see something, but you're gonna tell me what you see first. Cause you know, I know how she is about such things. She's like, there's something up there. And there was three of them. Up in, way up. They had to, you know, about 80 foot, you know, it's in the tree lines way up. They're pretty good up in the cave. And they're just watching over the, towards us. And they started just moving around and we're like, no, okay, it's time to leave now. Because she was getting scared. And I knew what they were, but you know, we're gonna get out of here. But when you go down to where it's at, there's no way to get to that cave. I could not figure out how they got up into it. Because there's no way. I mean, physically, the wall, the, it's like those. It's up and there's too much, you know, I never figured out how to get there. The only thing we could figure was you come down on the other side. But on that same backbone, you would see prints and you'd see branches broke over and stuff high up. Never thought anything about it, you know? But it was funny because she's like, did you see that? Well, you know, you tell me what you saw first.
It's kind of a hidden gem. I found it by mistake. Um, this is the Spavonaw Wildlife Management Area on the opposite side. Um, we are between Lake Uche and Spavonaw Lake. I came down here the other morning and sat for a couple hours. I didn't have any activity, but I was hoping. Um, we were gonna come down here and camp last night, but it was kind of late and the wind was blowing pretty hard. Um, I was afraid we wouldn't be able to hear anything. But uh, this is our little hidden gem that we can investigate.
I had one photo. I can't find it. That we took off a trail cam. And you can see his arm from about right here all the way up to his hand. It was laying right over top of the trail cam. You can see the hair on his arm stuff on that trail cam. But we never got a picture of him. He stayed behind it, I guess. Got a lot of those crosses, bent trees, stuff like that around the house. We got one little, we call it, I can, I call it a mini nest. It's all brushed up, leaves and limbs and trees behind it. But there's a little circle in the middle. We're like something is laid down.
We got that one that's popping its head behind that tree.
Yeah. Then there's another spot underneath that high line. I used to mow that all the time because we had a wellhouse out there. And I quit mowing it. And I went out there to mow one day and I kept nosing something. And almost near to that water hydrant, there was flat spot. The weeds were growed up around it, but it was all flat. Everything was round in front of it, side of it. But it looked like something, or some, two or three of them been laying.
But it can't be deer because it's not small. I mean, it's about as wide as this table probably.
Yeah.
At least. It's a one big spot. You know, because deer would be kind of different spots, but it's just one big circle where they laying.
My next encounter, I was out at the lake, which is a few miles from where the first encounter happened. Um, the town's called the Wingin' On. It's outside of Chelsea in Rogers County. Um, I was fishing and rocks kept getting thrown from back behind me. So I kept looking over my shoulder, you know, trying to figure out what it was. And I seen this massive horn up in the tree lines because it was getting dark. So I could really couldn't see. And um, they kept throwing rocks. So whenever I turn, I finally put my fishing pole in the back, closed the tailgate. Whenever I turned on the truck headlights, I seen it. It was probably, I don't know, 30, 40 yards away from me in the trees. It was like a reddish brown color, probably seven, eight feet tall. Built like a friggin' whiteback. Um, really long arms. And it just, it was massive. I don't know how any other way to say it. But I literally thought to myself, I just seen Bigfoot and nobody's gonna believe me. Because by the time I got my phone up to take a picture, it had already walked off into the woods. The one that I did see, whenever I turned on the headlights of my truck, it looked very, um, I don't wanna say malnourished, but it seemed like something might be wrong with it. Like it was sick. Like it was very large and statured and intimidating, but it, I don't know. I can't quite put my finger on it. Something just seemed off. Like if a human and a gorilla had a child, that's, that's what, that's what that, the face reminded me of. It was very, you could see the human features, but there were also some ape-like features. Its arms were like this and completely naked. Like it was just, the hair framed the face. There was no hair across it or anything.
And then also down in Xena, um, there's another place that doesn't exist anymore. It's on Drowning Creek. There are houses there now. My husband and I was out there one night on the lake and he got to feeling really weird, got really weird feeling. He said the hair on the back of his neck was standing up. Foul smell. This, it smelled like rotten, anything and everything. And got to turn around looking and he saw eyes up in the tree line, just high enough to go, we need to leave. And whatever it was stayed right with the truck as we were going out. Yeah. It was weird. It was, and we just talked it up. I was like, oh, it's just him. No biggie. You know, but freaked my husband out. We wouldn't go back. He even left a blanket out there. He was in such a hurry to get gone.
So last night, we were up pretty late, or I was, uh, with Chris and Charlotte. We were actually sitting around the campfire and uh, we had a scream. It sounded like a boy screaming from a distance. Not really, maybe 100 yards or so. Uh, anyway, we look over there and there's a bobcat. And he is just screaming away. And you're talking about eerie sound. Uh, that was some of the action we had late last night at the campground. Also, we have a local, I guess a camp skunk that comes into camp and just mills around in the middle of the night during the day. He's really tame, but I'm not gonna pet him. But anyway, that was some of the action we had inside of the camp as well. And a bald eagle over the top of our camp this morning.
Then that one night, we heard that whoop, whoop.
In the same spot.
Same spot. It goes between us and our neighbor and it goes down on the lake. And you got way down there and pretty soon I heard whoop, whoop.
We had one slap the house.
Oh yeah, we've had our brick home. We've had it slapped many times.
One steady, big smack.
Big sudden wife wake me up in the middle of the night. What was that? She said, I heard something slap the house and brick home. And you could feel it inside. It's so hard that you could feel it on the inside of the house.
Then we had that one story, that, the one that was behind the house and the one that was up at the lake, talking to each other. We had from our backyard, it was in the tree line. And it would do the whoop noise like he did. And what, a minute or so later, another one out towards this way, actually, out in this direction would whoop back at it. And we would hear it kind of going along the tree line, walking. And it got to what, the front yard?
Front yard. It was about the front yard.
And we heard it sneeze real loud. Cause we was out there listening to it. We weren't, he would mock it, you know, and try to get, do something, make the noise and stuff. And once in a while, he would kind of, he would kind of throw a rock or something like that. But it's, I got real close to it and it sneezed in front of me. And then it ran off towards this direction from us.
You definitely could hear it running. What people say is true. You can hear that thud.
Yeah, it wasn't quiet. It was just a big thud. You can hear it going along that tree, the power line where we got the print. It was about the same spot it went. And it went so far. And then we heard the other one, which was more feminine sounding.
Yeah.
It had a higher pitch. And it made one loud noise and then everything went quiet. And that was the last we heard of it.
Um, and then last year, um, in like July, I went camping with my now ex. And we had our dog with us. Uh, it was in the same area. Uh, it was around two, two o'clock, two thirty-ish. Um, I heard something walking around the tent. And you know, my dog got spooked, which you know, he doesn't get spooked by much. And um, we had something lay up against the tent. And again, there was this musty garbage wet dog smell. And um, my ex was like, you know, do I need to get out of the tent? I was like, no. And he's like, well, do you think it's bear? I said, no, I'm pretty sure I know what it is, but you ain't gonna believe me if I tell you what it is. He's like, what, you gonna make a joke, a Bigfoot joke? I said, no. I said, I'm just gonna keep it to myself. He goes, it's a Bigfoot, hon. I said, probably. Cause he doesn't believe in the cryptids or anything like that. And he was like, well, that's not real. I said, yeah, it is. I've, I've had encounters before in the same area. Um, but it laid there for probably 30 minutes. And I'm like a lot, I was scared. I didn't wanna move because I didn't know how it was gonna react. But I didn't reach out and I touched the side of the tent where it was leaned up against. So I could kind of feel like through the thin material of the tent, like the, they had really wiry kind of hair. But it did, it smelled horrible. It was bad. Um, and that, that's pretty much my, my most detailed stories.
I think the last time I got to see one was in Pryor on 412 Auction in Onola. It's very open field. The back part is a creek and then there's more field behind it. And the only thing we can think of is some of the Amish that said that he walks through there. He said, they said that's a normal path that he'll walk through. Now, if you could get some of those old timers to talk to you, I know they would have some stories.
We get multiple, what, like crosses and bent trees.
You know, marking their drought.
It's not small. I mean, it's long trees from way up. You can see them pull it and twist something. You can see them, the way they moving around the tree. So it's not like our neighbors messing with us because they don't come over. They know not to hunt on our land, you know, so nobody hunts.
They're live trees. They're not just dead trees. It might blow over in the wind or something. They're actual.
They're, I mean, they're from this small to this wide. They'll move it. They'll twist them around other ways. But they all go the same path every year.
You got the same route all the time.
That we call, we call it our neighbors. I mean, to the point that they're there every year. We leave them alone. They just do their thing.
Yeah, they start moving all winter.
Yeah. Yeah, they always come. Cause we live that way. And they always travel, what's this, north? East, east, east. Yeah, they travel east every year.
I have a couple other encounters with, you know, rocks being thrown and finding footprints. And uh, we found a, a lean-to at another spot, a couple miles away that, um, it was very large and very primitive, primitively built. And I can honestly say that I don't believe it was a person that built it. And it's literally right off of a boat ramp. So. It was again, at my dad's property. Um, we have a big pond in the front yard. And uh, over on the other side of the pond, in the soft mud, um, I found several footprints. Um, but I've never had my phone on me at the time. So I didn't get any photograph evidence. But there's, I'm not the only one who's been out there that has found footprints and stuff. But I'm the only one that's willing to talk about it.
I know, we would go out hunting for mushrooms and such. And we would constantly find prints.
Never cast any of it?
I was too young to even realize how to do it.
So not recently?
No. Um, and then back down, oh, about a couple of miles up from the backbone, there's an old house from the twenties. And we went in there one time. I did, my dad. And there is a big nest type thing in there. It was really neat to see. It looked like he had took shelter in there. Something had, I figured it was him because it was massive. But there's a spring down there. It's huge. It's called the Great Spring by the Indians. And this thing is so huge that it wouldn't surprise me. Because there's plenty of fish and berries and stuff up in there. And it's so remote, people don't go up in there. I mean, if you don't know where you're going, you will get lost.
So the only time I ever saw one, we was on a Boy Scout trip at Xena out towards Grove.
Jay.
Jay Grove area. And I had to be what, like 2007?
Seven, six.
2006, 2007.
Yeah.
And me and a few of my buddies, it was like midnight or so. We had snuck off. There was like six or seven of us. We'd snuck out of the camp, was traveling down the road. And we went around this curve. It was one of those real sharp curves. There was a pole light right, right in the middle. And it had the light down. And we was going and I was in front. And everybody like started screaming, yelling, hollering. And I was looking down and they all left, but me and one other kid. And when I looked up, there was something sitting at the pole light. He was sitting kind of like this, but he was all white. It's pure white. And I mean, from the pole light, he had to stand out like this, sitting down. He's about that tall on the pole light. And he looked over at us. I froze. I mean, I was 14 years old. I was terrified. He looked at us. He slowly got up. He had something in his hand. I don't know if it was fruit. I don't know if it was pecans. I don't know what it was. He just kind of dropped it. He kind of gave us a growl, like a real gut growl. Kind of like, leave me alone. I'll leave you alone kind of thing. He got up, turned around, he walked. And he cleared the fence. He didn't have to like hop and uh, he just stepped over the fence, stepped over it again. Looked back at us and then just walked off. I think I stood there another two, three minutes, just trying to figure out what happened. My buddy kind of grabbed me and said, I know you wanna go, but we're not going that way. So we're going back to camp. So we went back to camp and we call this guy Sweet Pete. It's his nickname. But he was sitting at the camp. And he had the fire. He kind of asked us, what are we doing? Uh, we went off, you know, looking around. He's like, well, get to bed. It's late. And we got to bed, sitting in the tent. All of a sudden, rocks started hitting the tent. And you could hear it, you know, a little thing once in a while. And everybody else was already in the camp. They weren't messing with us. They were all in their tents, terrified. So I know it wasn't them like playing a trick on me or whatever. And I looked out and the tents were sitting in a circle. I'd say 100 yards away, there's a little bitty pond out there. Cause the property we were on was for cows. They, they raised cows out there. So there's a pond, you know, and all that. The pond was sitting there. You could see something with its head kind of hucking over this bush, looking at us. And every once in a while, it'd throw a rock at us. But it was a different color. It wasn't white. So it was kind of a reddish brown looking. But it was a little bitty. So I think it was probably a kid, you know, Bigfoot, small toddler type. And it kept throwing rocks at us. So I picked up a rock, threw it back at it, which was a dumb idea. Cause then it started coming towards us. You'd see it once in a while, kind of coming towards you. You see the eyes. Cause I'd flash the light at it. And after a while, it kind of quit, got real quiet. And then they never came back. So they never did come into the camp. They, they stayed on the outside of it.
Well, I'm part Native American. So I have a very open, like there's things out there in this world that science can't explain. Um, I don't care what other people say, you know, they may call me crazy, but I believe in pretty much anything. Like, cryptids exist. They're, they were here before us. They'll probably be here long before, long after we're gone. Um, but I have always been a believer in, you know, Sasquatch, Dogman, stuff like that. To give it its due respect, you know, you don't mess with it. It shouldn't mess with you. Don't go chasing after it. It's just like, it's a wild animal. You leave it alone, it should leave you alone. It, it was just, it's spooky. Like I've had lots of encounters with different things that I can't explain. Um, my friends kind of gave me the nickname, the paranormal magnet. Because everything kind of happens to me. But I'm like, well, whenever you know, you believe about that stuff, it kind of, you kind of open your eyes and you see more things.
But you get used to just hearing them. And then I know my sister-in-law's grandmother, when they lived way back down in Xena, there was certain times of the summer, she refused to let there was certain times of the summer, she refused to let her kid, her grandkids go out into the backfield. She said, the skeeleys down there, the skeeleys down there. Skeeley's more of a spirit from what I've heard, you know? It's not the Bigfoot, but that's what she always called it. But like a little mischievous one.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what she called it. And she kept swearing it was down there. And it was just certain times there in the summer and she wouldn't let them out. They weren't allowed anywhere down there. They didn't care if the cows got out or anything that were not allowed to go after them.
We ran into a young man that was hiking alone down there. His name was Marcus. Cherokee. His wife is Cherokee. Just for fun, I asked him if he had any good stories of the hairy man because he said he'd been coming out in this area since he was a child. And he immediately told us about an encounter he had, his own personal encounter. Of course, he'd heard a lot of stories growing up and was very familiar with the stories of, of, what we call these Bigfoot creatures. But he said he was camping with some friends when he was around high school age over near Tiff City and on a river there with some high bluffs. And he went down there early one morning and there was one squatted down getting a drink out of the river. And when it, when it realized he was there, it stood, stood up and went straight up the bluff. He said it, it slipped and fell back and had to grab itself and, and, and continue on up the bluff. But he said it was massive. It was a huge Bigfoot. So it's just interesting, the people you run into in these areas and they have their own stories of these creatures. Just lends, lends credence and credibility to, to what, to what we hear and what we see. So always great to, to meet folks like that.
Well, I had a tree shaker here a while back. I didn't think nothing about it. I was driving down the driveway. And off to my left, I looked over and there's that little cedar tree or pine tree, whatever they are. It was probably eight foot tall, probably that big around. Wind wasn't blowing. There wasn't no storms. It's basically the sky like this. And all of a sudden, I happened to look over and that tree was just going like that. I mean, back and forth hard. And before I could get focused, I drove on down a little bit and thought, damn, wait a minute. So I went on down the road and looked up the fence line and I never seen that. Whether it got hit or left or what.
I know back in 2013, I came home from work one night and it sounded like it was just like, I pulled up to the house, got out and it sounded like a woman screaming real loud. I mean, it was loud enough to shake me. I'd just got out of the car and it's probably where the tree line is. Something screamed. So I'd say 50 yards from us. My buddy told me a story and he was at a house just across the street from us because they have a lake house down. And he was telling me that one time him and his buddies was out there just having like a little party out by the lake, just enjoying themselves. He said they went inside, started playing music, was drinking, playing around, and something was throwing rocks, he said, no bigger than this size at the lake house at them. He said they were out there messing with stuff, breaking glass. I mean, they got real drunk and stuff. But he swears up and down, he saw something standing next to the lake. And he said it had to be at least seven, eight foot tall, just picking up rocks and chunking at the house. Because they were playing the music and stuff. He thinks it made him mad or whatever. And he said they wouldn't stop until they left.
Could have been wanting to use that old house for a nest, too.
That's, yeah. But he said whatever it was, it wouldn't get any closer. But it just stood there and just kept throwing rocks over and over at them until they left. He told all them and he said they laughed at him, said, whatever, we'll go back up to the house. But he said as soon as they left, he would look back and it disappeared. He said it quit. It left the lake or whatever. He said it was gone after they left and shut everything down. I was little and that's when he bought me that Daisy BB gun.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I was what, eight, nine years old probably? And I went out in the woods and I was tracking deer and all that stuff, just being a little kid. And I had the gun. I was sitting behind a bush and I had the gun pointed at this deer. I was going to shoot it in the butt, just being a kid. And I don't remember if it was a bobcat or a fox or something was coming behind me. And I could hear it. And I looked over at it and it kind of looked at me. So I started to turn the gun that way to maybe shoot it and scare it off and that way I can enjoy. And no sooner as I turned the gun, pointed at it, I'd say stick about this wide, about that thick, came flying in the air and it hit it. Hit the bobcat and it ran off. And I thought, well, maybe it's sticking out of the house or the tree or whatever. And as I stood up, looked around, I could see like there was a tree about this far from that, me and that tree, something had leaned over and looked at me. And it had to be, I mean, when I was eight and nine, it was about that tall, so I'd say eight foot or so. She was way up there. You could tell it was a female. You could tell it was a female. But she leaned over and looked at me and just kind of leaned back over. But she kept to where I could see her shoulder and like half her face. And I was kind of backed up real slowly, started kind of going back to the house. Because at that time, I didn't know what Bigfoot was. I didn't know, you know? And as I was going back, I kept looking around and she would move tree to tree and follow me all the way back up to the tree line. And as soon as I got to the house, I turned back around and that's when she was gone. Because I, as I got so far, I could see her, you know, each tree. And she would just kind of lean over looking at me.
It's like she was protecting me.
Yeah.
Make sure you got back to the house safely and the bobcat was gone.
But I mean, just as I got to that tree line, went to the house, she was gone. Never saw her again. Oh, you could see the breasts. I mean, clear as day. I mean, it wasn't like she was a, it wasn't like a big fat Bigfoot, you know? It was real, she was real skinny. And her upper torso, you know, you could see the character, her six. Her face, I'd say, was kind of open. I mean, there was no hair. But like I said, it was from this distance to there and it's been 19 years since I've seen it. But, I mean, she was brown. I'd say reddish brown, no bigger than eight foot. I couldn't tell you how much she weighed. I mean, I never saw the full body. I just saw, like I said, from probably the waist up, but I only saw like half of her body. She leaned just enough to kind of look at me, let me know, hey, she's right there. But she never came any closer while I was looking at her. It's always when I turn around, walk off, she'd move to a different tree. So it wasn't like she came up and tried to take care of me. I think it's just her face didn't have no hair. And she had the big brow, you know, the big brow, the eyes and stuff. And it was out just enough that there was shade from it.
Eyebrows come out enough to help shade it too.
But it was a real, almost egg-shaped head. You know, from here, it'd go kind of down, slender a little bit. You know, there's the hair all, of course. You could tell the breasts. You could tell the hand. I know the hand, there was hair on top, but it wasn't on bottom. Almost like a dog, you know, the hair on the top. Yeah. Kind of a darkish brown skin, real, real dark. And she, like she would lean over and I could see her hand kind of floating like this. And she leaned back, you know, stuff. But like I said, she couldn't have been like an older one. It had to be like a teenage, maybe young adult. She was real curious, but she never came out of that tree, you know? Every tree she was at, she wouldn't come past it. She just kind of watched me as I went up to the house. But she wasn't bigger than that white one that I saw years later. That white one was humongous. I mean, he was big. He had the, real tall, he was white. But his hair kind of went over his face a little bit. It was real shaggy and bushy, like, like he is, he was up in age. And it almost seemed like he pretty much didn't care that we was there. It was almost like we kind of disrupted him, kind of made him mad and he just going to walk off. But I mean, the growl, you could feel the growl. It, it felt like he meant, don't leave, you know, leave me alone. I'll leave you alone. This is your one warning. Like, you could almost feel the vibration from his growl. He never opened his mouth. He just kind of, like that. And he had real long hair. I'd say two, three inch long hair. You could tell he had been through some bushes because he had like, he had burrs all over him. He looked like he was in the lake, like in a pond or something because he had brown, like mud on his feet and stuff. But he had the empty paw, like no hair on this side, hair on this side. He had the brows, just like that female. But his, like, face was more sunken in.
Last night, we, we drove around some Spavenall area with the thermal on the car. We had quite a bit of activity as far as game. We, we've seen plenty of deer. We had raccoons in front of us last night. We had an armadillo run underneath the car almost. But it was a really good night. It was a little windy, but I think there was a lot of game out last night. Unfortunately, no Bigfoot, but we did have some real pretty areas, real creepy areas where we got to drive around and it worked out really well.
So my podcast is called Unexplained Memories. You can find it on Spotify, Apple Podcast, anywhere you can find podcasts. I have a website for my merch and stuff. It's unexplainedmemories.com. You can hit me up on Facebook, on Spotify, anywhere that you can message me, let me know. My main goal with my podcast is simply for people to tell stories.
I just wanted to say, one of the, one of the reasons we chose this area, there's a lot of factors came into why we wanted to come up this way in northeast Oklahoma. We've heard a lot of stories and reports. The BFRO actually has some, a couple of reports around the J area. I've collected a Class C sighting report around Kenwood. Evans, he's heard reports and stories. Also, we, on the internet, there's an article out there saying that back in the 1950s, this area had Bigfoot throughout here and they were building the Spavenall Lake. I think it was, I think it was Spavenall Lake. They flooded the area to build the lake and it drove all the Bigfoot out of the area. And according to the article and according to the legend, Bigfoot were pretty angry that they had to, they were getting driven out of here. But also in the article, they had to tell all the local natives to, to clear the area too because they were getting ready to flood the area for the lake. So, so interesting and coming up here, we're seeing firsthand, I mean, how wooded and tucked away back here. This, this really is up here in northeast Oklahoma. So southeast Oklahoma, it's, it's your main spot to go for Bigfoot country, but northeast Oklahoma's got it going on too, guys.